July with the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start. So this is a work session. So there's um typically there aren't public comments and I want to get back into a routine where we have one work session a month, um and then a meeting where we make decisions in the second meeting. And so typically we won't have public comment, but this evening I decided to have one at the beginning of the year. So we're open up to public comment. Anyone here?
Hi, Linda, thank you for sharing. You know, this is a work session. I figured I had to do some work to do. This way we got our monies worth again. I want to thank the leadership of the Juneteenth Committee for making me more aware of my Italian-American identity. Columbus Day, a national state holiday, celebrates Italian culture in America. Even our country is named after an Italian, Americas Vasco Chi. Cristoforo Colombo, not Columbus. Giovanni Capoto. And Giovanni di Verenziano. All Italian explorers have played a large role in North American history. For too many years in Lewisboro, Italian-Americans have been marginalized by the dominant white WASP culture. Now that we are the largest ethnic minority, having a Colombo Day celebration is warranted. Therefore, the Garibaldi Society of Lewisboro asked for the same financial consideration afforded all other town celebrations with the Memorial Day and July 4th excluded. Please think about it, and I know you'll make the right decision.
I'm Robert Whitaker from Goldens Bridge. This concerns the climate crisis and the claim that we need to give oil and gas companies even more land and permits to drill in order to lower consumer prices. More than nine thousand permits and leases for companies to drill on federal land have already been approved but aren't being used. The industry owns over ten years' worth of unused permits and leases. Companies are currently producing oil and gas on only about half of the land that they've already leased. The oil and gas industry has all the land and permits and leases it needs to increase production, but it hasn't and won't because it profits from the current crisis. Last year, instead of investing a reasonable amount of their tens of billions of dollars in profits for drilling and infrastructure that might, in the future, increase supply and thereby reduce the consumer price, companies instead gave most of their profits directly to CEOs and investors because it wasn't in their financial interest to take any action that would lower consumer prices. Actual production of oil and gas from new land leases and permits can take years, and oil and gas executives admit that increasing drilling now will have absolutely no effect on short-term supply or prices, and only so to set the country up to continue on a fossil-fuel-dependent future. During the very time you need to significantly reduce them if we're going to have any chance of preventing a catastrophic future for all life. More drilling permits and leases now aren't going to lower prices, but they will lock the United States into fossil-fuel dependence for decades. For real energy independence, for lower energy prices that last, and for the well-being of future life on Earth, we need to start urgently investing in clean, sustainable energy. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Simone, I'm asking you to unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Thank you for letting me speak at a work session. It's a bit awkward speaking prior to any presentation, but I just wanted to say something short that I hope resonates. When the veterans asked for monies of the prior board which Tony and Dan were on, they were told, "No, raise it yourselves." They did, and many of us quickly contributed. It's my belief that either this board opens the vault and gives our money to every group that asks, or to no group. It's also my belief that town residents would happily contribute in the same way that they did for the veterans. Um, I've always believed in transparency and fairness. I've been accused of just doing things politically. It really is truly for transparency and fairness. Two easy words to say and spell, but somehow when sprinkled with politics, they disappear. Last meeting, filing fees were waived for one group. Now I believe all groups should have filing fees waived, or the decision brought to the board by Councilmember Sklarin, supported by Councilmembers Welsh and Shaw and Town Supervisor Goncalves, must be rescinded. Councilmember Rendo very wisely said, and I paraphrase, "I don't disagree with all of your points, but let's wait and discuss it, and then make an informed decision." Very wise words that were disregarded. For this one decision now sets a precedent for every other group that addresses this board for that very waiver. Let's be careful giving away money in an awful economy where food and gas are at a premium. Reason decision-making should never be rushed. It has less to do with who's asking for money and more to do with how it impacts our town's policies and finances going forward. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Uh, but here's the weekend.
That's it, okay. Communications, I have one item I'd like to read. So as was announced at the last meeting, Dana Makelem is going to be moving on to another opportunity. She's our Parks and Recreation Superintendent. So we put together a proclamation, which I'm gonna read here tonight. It'll be presented to her. She could make it this evening, but it'll be presented to her Wednesday evening when we have a going-away ceremony party before her. So this is a resolution adopted by Town Board, Town of Lewisboro, at a meeting held on April 11, 2022. Whereas Dana Makelem Derso has served Lewisboro, New York, as Superintendent of Parks and Recreation for sixteen years of expansion and innovation inspired by Dana's enthusiasm, energy, and willingness to support the ideas of her relatively inexperienced staff. And whereas Dana Makelem Derso leaves the town with major improvements to its facilities, including a totally rebuilt swimming pool complex, improved basketball and tennis courts, adding the popular pickleball courts, dramatically increasing the popularity of the Leon Library Preserve by expanding the trails, building a substantial parking area and making safe the Black Mansion, and turning it into a rest area, and cheerleading a $650,000 campaign to build a handicap-accessible playground. And whereas Dana Makelem Derso successfully staged the July 4th fireworks with three thousand attendees, operating camps for seven hundred campers, coordinated a basketball league for sixty-six teams, and hired and supervised all the full-time, part-time, and seasonal staff. And whereas these achievements and years of public service to the citizens of Lewisboro are deserving of public notice, now therefore, be it resolved at the Town Board of the Town of Lewisboro, in recognition of these worthy contributions of Dana Makelem Derso, does hereby offer the thanks of its populace, and be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this April 11, 2022, Town Board meeting for future generations to see, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Dana Makelem Derso at the South Cell of New York on the Saturday of April 2022. So I just want to thank Dana again for her years of service and look forward to presenting a framed version of this to her on Wednesday night. So motion to adopt the proclamation.
Motion, Andrew Rendell.
Second. Discussion. Hold in favor? Aye. Next, we have approval minutes, or the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Please submit it, send the Police Department monthly report. Second?
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Discussion. Thank you. So next we have, in our own business, we have discussion concerning the community and town events and the Prague input. Mary shot, did Mary, is Mary on the recording? She said she probably would not make it, but.
I do not see it.
Okay, Mary's out this evening, so, and, okay. So I'm gonna read, these are notes that Mary took from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council meeting that was held last week.
Email to the board.
This is email to the board, correct. Right, so. So the, and she, you know, I was hoping she was gonna be here. I was looking to put together some bullet points on her. Share, but she was under the weather, so that didn't happen. But basically, recommendations from Prague were, when events are over thirty people, they should get insurance coverage. Requests for waivers, for fees, et cetera, should be decided by the Town Board. There are two major types of events which they classified. One is a community, community events, and then town-sponsored events. Town-sponsored events are alcohol-free, fundraising-free, unless the funds go back to the town, and inclusive for everyone. Town-sponsored events are also administered by a town employee, so there is an accountability and transparency. People can contribute and sponsor events or aspects of these events. So that was a town-sponsored event. Community events can have alcohol, but must file the ABC, which is the alcohol permit application, and have the proper insurance. The town can provide funding or grants, but it is recommended that if it is seed money, that it be repaid. They recommend that a total amount be set and that a deadline announced for town support for the events. The committee be formed to evaluate the applications, and when the money runs out, groups would apply for the funds the following year. The Prague Advisory Council voted, and it was unanimously approved, that Juneteenth should be a town-sponsored event. Mary indicated that she would be the point person for this event. There was also an extended discussion about the Pride and the Park events, as well as its family dance events. Because the application includes an ABC permit for alcohol, Prague Advisory Council recommends that the Pride and the Park be considered a community event. Concern was also expressed that this would be happening the day after the fireworks, which contains cleanup and, yeah, concerns around that. So those are the notes from the Prague meeting.
Could you just go with the Prague's town-sponsored event?
Sure, the events are alcohol-free, fundraising fee-free, unless the funds go back to the town, and inclusive, meaning open to all. Town-sponsored events are also administered by a town employee, so there is an accountability and transparency. People can contribute and sponsor events or aspects of these events. We also discussed, it's not on these notes, but the fact that you're having an event that's in celebration of a holiday, a national holiday, would fall under as a town-sponsored event. That's not captured over here. So that's a, so the discussion is, we go along with this, and we're not gonna make the decision tonight. The decision will be made at the next board meeting. But these are some thoughts that were pieced together by Mary from the Prague meeting.
Do you, since you brought this up, do you have any ordinary feedback, or you want to just think about it next meeting? Let's do it as well.
No, it's fine. So.
Discussing, yeah.
So. Here's what I do. At the last Town Board meeting, under our own business, I think you brought up the application that was filed by the women who wanted to hold the Juneteenth event.
Right.
And there was discussion as to whether or not the town was gonna provide a portion or the entirety of what their proposed budget was. There was a lot of, there was discussion, and then, that they needed to submit their application to Parks and Rec, which they did. And then it came before us to waive the fees, which we did. But then, subsequent, a Prague meeting happened, and there was a discussion, at which time our advisory council voted that they believe that Juneteenth should be a town-sponsored event, similar to Fourth of July or Veterans Day or Memorial Day, right?
Not Veterans, Veterans Day is not a town-sponsored, Memorial Day is, right, yeah.
But our Veterans Advisory Council does hold an event for which all the monies that are usually donated typically.
Right, and the town does provide resources to that event.
And resources.
Staff, right, and hanging in the banners, et cetera.
And Memorial Day, we don't have a budget for Memorial Day other than the staff that we provide to support the events.
Actually, we do, it's a line item for Memorial Day. It's about fifteen hundred dollars.
When I spoke to Dana, she said that the money for Memorial Day was solely for staff. Staffing the event at the, this is a parade, so we need staffing for the parade.
Staffing's other separate line item, so.
We don't run the races at no expense. It's all the church that does the race, the church that does the carnival, the fair. It's merely the parade. So she indicated to me that as far as expenses go, that it really wasn't towards anything other than those peripheral things. Was that we weren't running the event, we weren't running any activities, we were merely supporting
Right.
the event.
And we were buying reeds and better place, correct?
It's under my budget line.
The reeds are, yeah.
Two thousand for this year.
Right.
That includes bagpipers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the sound person.
Right.
Uh, two live wreaths that are in front, that's two hundred total, and then flags that I purchased.
Right.
Okay. So, that's Memorial, and then Fourth of July is our largest town-sponsored slash funded event, for which for many years now, we have been taking sponsorships for the fireworks.
July, Fourth of the fireworks. Fireworks spectacular.
Yeah, the fireworks spectacular.
Well, pretty leading up to, yeah.
Alright, so, so, like I, I could see, I mean, these are, this is now, Juneteenth is now federal state, and it is a town event for a holiday for which people are given a day off, it's a three-day weekend. So I can understand how that would fall under the purview of, you know, if there was going to be an event, that it it could be town-sponsored. You know, we're not talking a budget here tonight, that's not the point. And if it's a town-sponsored event, then it would be run by the town, correct?
No, it means that there are people, it could be volunteers running it, but the town will have a representative, and Mary is representative, that would help with the coordination.
So this is something new. This isn't, this isn't, it's not under the same category as Fourth of July or Memorial Day or Veterans Day. It would be its own thing.
Correct.
It's like Prague, like Prague's talking about designating an official town liaison.
Because then, what happens is, they don't have to go out and get their own insurance, which could cost, you know, five hundred dollars to get their own certificate of insurance. So it falls under the town's insurance policy.
So we would be paying for the insurance, we being the town, and we would be waiving.
Not extra.
Right?
It's only the tax.
It would be covered by our, by our office.
Right.
Alright, and if it's town-sponsored, then we said no alcohol.
Correct.
No fundraising unless the monies revert back to the town. Fundraising.
They could fundraise if, right, you just.
If the monies revert back to the town.
It's, yeah, they're fundraising fee-free unless the funds go back to the town, right?
Okay, alright. And resident events or, or community events, right, is the other category that they are saying we should create for purposes of review, right? Um, they will need insurance if there's thirty or more people. So these are not, this is not birthday parties, it's not sweet sixteen parties, it's not those events at the park. We're talking about community events open to, open to everyone to come. Alright, and under those circumstances, the Town Board will, you know, these would not be 501(c)(3)'s, they would be private citizen-run events, or would they also?
They could be 501(c)(3)'s as well.
They could.
But 501(c)(3)'s will typically be.
They, okay.
Yeah, will waive their fees, 501(c)(3)'s, the application fee.
Alright.
But they pretty much fundraise and pay for everything.
So then, I believe there was a discussion about putting a line together for community events, or what was it, what was it going to be called?
Yeah, there's.
Celebrations line?
Yeah, there's actually, there's an existing line, it's called the Community Enrichment, which has been used to cover, for example, the New Neighbor events that Parks and Rec has every, every year.
But that's a town event.
It's a town event. Here was the Fourth of July cool event, that free event that we did last year.
Again, a town event.
That's a town event, right, but that came out of that Community Enrichment line item.
But none, none of the money that came out of that line item went to private citizens throwing a community event. Town-run events, okay. But there was a discussion about the idea of putting together a similar line
Right.
that we would find and allow groups of residents to apply for that money to be used for a community event.
Correct.
And there was discussion that it would be given a maximum budget that would go in, and that each applicant would have a maximum they could apply for.
Correct.
And they would have to meet certain criteria in their application in January, and then subsequently, the Town Board or a committee appointed by the Town Board would determine who the recipients of those funds would be.
Correct.
Correct. And then, if those, if those funds were granted to a resident group that wanted to throw a community event, is that, is gonna be a distinction between whether it's gonna be an outright grant or whether it's going to be a loan? Is that right? Or would all the money be expected to be paid back?
It would be expected to be paid back if they're fundraising.
If they're fundraising.
Correct.
But if they're not, then it was, it's basically.
The expectation is that we would provide some.
So here's the issue I have with that. I don't think the town
Okay.
should be a bank.
Right.
I don't think we should be loaning money. I don't think we should be granting money.
Okay.
I think that these particular events for the community at large being thrown by private citizens should be taken into consideration the way fees. And I think that that's fair, because that would be the town's contribution or grant to them that would permit them to use town property
Right.
uh, free of charge, but for the fact that they need some of the other criteria, over thirty people, they have to get insurance, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I, I mean, we're already pretty generous at waiving our fees, and I, and I I just don't see that putting another three thousand or five thousand on a line, and then being, then, then let's say for argument's sake, we fund that line with three thousand dollars.
Right.
Right? And we say the maximum each applicant can apply for is a thousand dollars. Just for argument's sake. I don't, I don't know what Prague will decide or what we'll determine. And there's five applicants or six applicants for that three thousand dollars. Then, either the Town Board or a committee appointed by the Town Board is then put in the position of determining which groups of individuals or which event is more worthy of receiving funding from the town than others. And I don't think that that's really a fair position to put the Town Board in
Right.
or a committee appointed by the Town Board. Is, you know, we, you know, one event could be a movie in the park, another event could be Pride, another event could be Mental Health Awareness Day, you know, that's coming up, right? Um, and then, if you've got multiple, then whoever has to make that decision is being put in the position of determining or appearing to determine what's more important this year. And I, I think that that's just not.
So that's for community events, right? Not, not, not like national holiday events that we.
No, because Juneteenth is a national holiday. We're not, we're not disputing that. If the town decides to do a town-sponsored event, that, that's a different topic of conversation. Like, for instance, I helped sponsor a movie night last year, Rich was gonna sponsor a concert in the park, right? Those were gonna be open to the community at large to attend.
Right.
Right? I didn't ask to waive the fees. I guess I could have, right? Or my group didn't ask to waive the fees, I guess we could have. Rich didn't ask to waive the fees. I mean, his event got canceled because there was a huge storm.
Right.
Uh, but if we had, that would have been a nice gesture on the part of the town to waive the fees, but I, I don't. I didn't ask for money. I wouldn't be looking for money. Rich wasn't looking for money. Uh, if, if you're going to do an event, I think that, and open it up to the community, it's not the town's decision to have it, nor should the town decide what's, or appear to decide what's more important, what's more prevalent, what's more, what has more worth to the community than another event. And then, you know, that, I think that just causes problems for everyone. It causes, it just, it's unfair. It's unfair to ask the Town Board to decide, and I think that, you know, these types of community events which are popular, many of them can do a GoFundMe or similar things and have the money in no time. So that's just, that's just my, I think they should all be treated the same, and I think that, that they should fall under the guise of of having the Town Board determine to waive fees.
Right.
And that is contribution enough.
Right.
That's my thought.
Yep.
That's essentially my view, as it really was, as I articulated last year. Um, it hasn't, it hasn't changed. That's gonna be my view this year, and will be my view. We can't based upon a community, like every community with limited financial resources, we can't do for everybody that would be deserving. Uh, so we can't do for, for anybody in that, in that, in that category that you're addressing. We can't make these value judgments to determine that one is any better than the other. That's, that's a position we shouldn't be put in. Um, especially when, you know, resources are scarce and the economy being what it is, and given if it's a thousand, two thousand, or five thousand, that's five thousand dollars of potholes that are not gonna be filled, and that's a lot closer to our core mission as a local government. Certain things that people expect, and we gotta start by those things being.
Janet, is there a Sean?
Yeah, Welsh is on. Can you hear me?
Ah!
Here it is.
From, from the heavens, I guess it sounds like, sorry.
We make a motion for a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Dan.
Thank you very much. Very kind of you. So, so yes, if I, if I might weigh in, I just, just got in, I'm sorry, work issues. But I, I would just say that I would be in favor of supporting this event, that I hear, I hear what you guys are saying, but I think this is, um, this is a, a, a different thing for the United States. We have a different level of responsibility here, and I would be in favor of supporting this event.
Which one specifically, Dan?
Um, the, the Juneteenth event. I assume that's what we're talking about, no?
No.
No, that, yeah, we're talking about the non-federal holiday events, like community events.
Okay, non-federal holiday. Ah, okay, alright. Sorry about that, then, then, jumping in ignorantly.
That's fine. I mean, we, we're not determining how the event, the, we haven't gotten to the point where we're determining how the Juneteenth is gonna be run, just that, that it's going to be a town-sponsored event. And that Mary Shaw has volunteered to help spearhead that, but we haven't made any decision, nor have we had any discussion on how that's gonna be, and if it's gonna be funded by the town, and how that, how that's gonna work.
Okay, yet to discuss. That's fine.
You were just kind of speaking about Prague's, uh, feedback on Prague's input.
Wonderful. Gotcha.
I think, I think it'll be, it'd be important to have Mary here in order to discuss the details of the Juneteenth event, because she's, you're having, and I'm sure she has ideas, and I don't think it would be right to make any have discussion without her.
Right.
Have to redo everything all over again when she's here.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, last minute she couldn't make it, so, yeah. Alright, so we'll, we'll continue the dialogue in the next meeting and decision, okay? So, new business. New John Family Resource Center is Patty Agostino, Janet, any chats?
No, I'm here.
Oh, Patty's here. Oh, okay. Nice to meet you personally.
I'm live. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Paulus and Councilmembers, for allowing us the time to appear this evening. And for those of you who may not know, you were just introduced. I'm Patty Reyes Agostino, and I serve as President of the Board of New John Family Resource Center. Much has changed globally and locally since our last appearance before the Board, including who sits on your Board, making it an opportune moment to be here this evening. The mission of New John Family Resource Center is to provide and expand support for programs and services for victims of domestic abuse, sexual assault, elder abuse, and human trafficking in northern Westchester. for victims of domestic abuse, sexual assault, elder abuse, and human trafficking in Northern Westchester. Our focus is victims of these crimes because there are overlapping elements among them which result in psychological and physical isolation. When combined with our geographical location, the challenge in accessing services is overwhelming, creating a perfect storm for legal situations. Our volunteer board is comprised of six members. And I will leave a complete board profile here with Mary along with some other lead behinds. But I wanted to introduce and briefly describe our board members. Here with us this evening is Lynn Hillbrand Porcelino, Special Education and Mental Health Advocate, Experienced Veterinary Communications Professional, as well as a private chef. She is committed to creating partnerships to evoke change. Lynn has served on the Board for the Mental Health Association of Westchester. She co-founded our peer support program with Marissa Moran and currently serves as Vice President of our Board. Marissa Moran sitting right next to her. Among many other things, she has raised four children in Northern Westchester. She is an active part of the current training team for the countywide high-risk team. She's a peer support advocate and co-founder of our peer support crew. Our Treasurer, Frank Helen Rand, is a founding Board Member of our organization and a retired CFO of IBM Japan and IBM Australia and New Zealand, a resident of Northern Westchester for fifty-plus years. And he has years of experience as a member and leader of several local boards. And our Secretary, Tamara Mitchell, was a founding Board Member, also a partner at a leading New York State law firm, Father Malone. She brings decades of experience in matrimonial and family law, including representing and advocating for victims of domestic violence. She's an active participant in several boards and bar association committees and also writes some lectures extensively about domestic violence law and practice and has received numerous awards for her contribution. Janet Faso, one of our newest members, comes with twenty-plus years of global marketing experience. Former resident of both Pound Ridge and Lewisboro, has served as a keynote speaker for the annual Greenwich Y Domestic Abuse Services Fundraising Event. And of course, Chief David Ryan. And he really doesn't need an introduction with forty years of law enforcement, twenty-three years as Chief of Police in Pound Ridge, serving on numerous boards and committees throughout the county. And his leadership was significant and as you may recall motivational. In making New Dawn the site for training and meetings for the initial high-risk pilot program. The program that your towns backed up, all five of them. And it was such a success that it has become a model for the expansion of the program countywide. And myself, with over twenty years as an active Pound Ridge Northern Westchester Community Member, a marketing and branding professional, crisis counselor, divorce mediator, member of the Lewis Order Police Reform Committee, along with Councilmember Randy O'Quinn Siren, participant in the County Domestic Violence Council and appointed at-large member of the Westchester Women's Advisory Board. Your typical long-time tasker. So let's update you on what has been going on at New Dawn. Pre-COVID, we had started a peer support group. Pace Women's Justice Center has struck, had started a satellite walking clinic supported by funding which Kipley Kojo, in her position as legislator at the time, helped obtain. Northern Westchester High Risk Team meetings were taking place regularly. Police trainings had been completed. Hope Store was using the site for individual counseling sessions for their clients. And as with everything else, when COVID happened, things came to a sudden halt. And now they have evolved. So here's where we are currently. The Northern Westchester High Risk Team meetings and Pace Women's Justice Center Legal Clinic will resume there when able. They are not the legal meeting yet. We've welcomed to partner Northern Westchester Women's Resource Center as an active partner. Having had staff at our peer support groups available for counseling with additional possibilities and discussion for an expanded collaboration. We're developing a relationship with SAFE from Westchester Medical Center's Crisis Intervention Program. Its Senior Director, Leisha Sandberg, has attended our peer support group. SAFE stands for Sexual Assault, Abuse, and Victims Empowerment. We've participated in food and security programs under Chief Ryan's leadership during the holidays. It's um, provided families with much-needed and appreciated Thanksgiving meals. We've established a very limited hardship fund that we are testing out with our clients. We provide safe computer access via appointment to facilitate access to information and communication with support services as well as remote court appearances when appropriate. The use of the computer onsite provides for secure and confidential access outside of the control of the user. There's no way that they can be tracked at all. A need for additional computers is anticipated as the number of clients increases and service providers begin to meet in person with more frequency. We also provide free cell phones and phone service plans to our clients to facilitate their confidential contacts with support and legal services. This enhances their safety by removing their users' ability to access records of all made on victim's cell phones. Outreach continues to expand. We have a website on the WITS platform that describes our mission, programs, events, how to get involved by volunteering, collaborations, donations. We also have a Facebook page where we promote our services in various community settings such as this briefing, participation in events like the Counter-Terrorist Festival, posing, posting lawn signs during October, which is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In addition, board members speak at professional conferences and other organizational meetings. Peer support continued during COVID, but only on an as-needed basis in a socially distant and safe manner. But since we've restarted in-person meetings, the average number of attendees per meeting has almost tripled since COVID at two and a half times the rate that it was prior to COVID. During the summer, we added a few youth sessions, finding that it was appropriate and needed. We're looking to do that again. Over the past two years, twenty individuals have attended the majority of these post-COVID sessions. Fifteen towns are represented among the attendees. Of the five municipalities that came together to help us to get New Dawn on its feet, the percentage of attendees are as follows. Lewisboro, twenty-five percent. Pound Ridge, twenty percent. Somers, ten percent. Bedford, fifteen, and North Salem, five. The programs that are in development currently include the establishment of the Richard B. Lyman Civic Engagement Service Memorial Scholarship in memory of Dick Lyman, a founding Board Member, friend, and mentor to so many of us. Without his dedication to this issue, determination, and support, we would not exist today. The scholarship will be awarded to one high school junior or senior in the public school districts that serve the communities of Bedford, Pound Ridge, Lewisboro, North Salem, and Somers. The details and requirements will be announced in the next month or so, and we hope to have your support in distributing that information. We realize that we are behind the April, as many of the local schools have already done that program. So this is going to have to be more of a grassroots scholarship for the first year. We are also establishing an advisory board to, to serve as liaison between the Board of Directors and community sectors in which advisory board members have connections. Each, each advisory board member, we are going to do three for the initial round, will be an ambassador for us by communicating our mission, programs, and activities, as well as by bringing back to us ideas and suggestions from the community at large. Additionally, the advisory board will have a very active role in the initial implementation and selection process for the first annual Richard B. Lyman Civic Engagement Service Memorial Scholarship. A program that is currently in exploratory stage is the addition of therapeutic support services. Arrangements for trauma-related and counseling therapeutic services for domestic violence victims at the site are currently being explored. We're hoping to provide services regularly through collaborations with various county programs and other nonprofit organizations or if necessary, by contracting domestic violence experienced professionals to perform these services. That is our update. In addition to that, I will point out that New Dawn has been very fortunate in supporting um, a specific community group who ran a fabulous fundraiser for us um, at the Walkabout Country Club, the Women's Golf um Luncheon. And we um, and we've had some other generous support so that we are at a point where we feel as you've already received, a rebate back. So we are equal partners in the rent agreement that we have. And, and I mentioned to you Supervisor Fongis, if I can continue to use your office and the liaison to negotiate with that brand to keep your.
Absolutely. So.
Um, if anyone has any questions?
Thanks.
You're welcome. I will leave things with Mary and I will also email them so she can send them out to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, we have um the Resolution to approve and creation of the new Recreation Supervisor Position. So just a little back uh, background on this. So la- last year, we approved this uh, position with the uh, twenty twenty two budget. Um, but we didn't officially create a position. And uh, it's, it's a new position for the town of Lewisboro within civil service. So we need to have a resolution uh, to create this position and be able to move forward with uh, finalizing the um, the onboarding of new Rec Supervisor. So that's the reason it's here. So it's more of a, it's a housekeeping item and something that should have been done. And it was brought to our attention that we didn't do this and. It's the implementing resolution for what we approved in last year's budget. Correct. Right. Any questions?
Was it here last? Would you?
Oh, you weren't here.
No, I didn't want to approve anything. So I don't know. I don't really know what it's about. Um, is Dan on?
Yes. Here. And.
So it, it might be more appropriate.
For the, for those of us who are here.
To vote on it.
Right. Okay. Okay. So Dan, any, any questions?
No questions. I mean, this is a sensible path forward for us to navigate our, our department um, supervisory staffing needs, it seems to me. So is the intent to take action tonight or were we, is this?
It is, it is. So we, we need to pass this resolution so that we can continue with the civil service.
Yeah. So I'm in support of that and certainly the individuals that um, uh, we have uh, identified for this position um, are, seem very qualified. So I'm all, all in favor.
So do I have a motion to approve this, the creation of the Rec Supervisor Position?
So moved.
Second. Discussion all in favor? I.
Wendell, please.
Interesting. Um, the next one is someone's situation. It was with the, uh, for the highway department. It's the new um MEO, which is Machine Equipment Operator slash Mechanic Position. So this is a position created by or requested by a highways superintendent. It was approved in the budget process, someone's situation to create the position and to be able to move forward.
Yeah. I recall this as well and, and um, the, the, the need seems to be there. Certainly uh, we're working on a, on a more uh abbreviated staffing uh roster than, than was uh, really uh advisable. And so, so that's why we made the addition there. So.
The only issue is whether we wanted to just see where we're at financially and whether we wanted to defer from implementing second quarter as opposed to just seeing where we are at the heavier point and uh, deferring it to uh, third quarter. So we can see where we are after financials as far as the uh, the first half of the year. So in other words, look at the, the highway budget and see where. Just, just see where we are in light of this. We have, uh, we can just see where we are um at the end of the half year will have a good indication how we're doing financially against some of the, the, right, some of the numbers come in for the second quarter as far as um counties. Know those come in during the second quarter sometimes usually. Okay. Yeah. So that way, um, based upon how the economy's been, we'll have a more of an accurate assessment. I would think if we just defer ninety days and then we beginning of third quarter, take it up and see exactly where we're at with indication. We can't get it into the first quarter because those big numbers are not going to come until uh.
Right.
Later in the second quarter. So just to defer it, my, my suggestion would be just to defer it to the beginning of the third quarter. Okay.
I mean. Yeah. I mean, that, that, that's fine as long as uh, the highway department isn't, as I'm saying that to have some urgent need within the next couple of weeks. I guess we'd want to also know how the, the winter salt and overtime numbers uh finalized if we are going to do that review. So pull that together as well.
Good point. Okay. So we want to, so we'll hold off on this? Yeah, we said we, we tabled for the first meeting after uh, first half of the year. That way we'll be able to get the input from Leo, see exactly where we are budget wise for the first half. Including the input that Dan said too, as far as, you know, I did as far as, and it's snow season. Hopefully that's done. Okay, fine. So we'll, we'll do that. Okay, next. Michael Seriano, can you go discuss Bacio?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here on behalf of Bacio Antonio and his partners. To know that back in twenty sixteen, they completed a major renovation expansion of the restaurant itself. And uh, and we did the entire parking lot and put in a lot of the expensive store or facilities on the site. The, it's a, the Bacio currently is on just under a two-acre site, but it's split zone so that the, the, the northerly half of the site where all of the development is, is retail business. And the southerly half is our one-half acre. So all the development was forced here and it limited the parking. I think we have twenty-eight regular spaces now and two handicapped accessible spaces. We're total of thirty spaces. It, it, the renovation came out beautifully. It's, I think, one of the most popular restaurants in town. And uh, and it has been very successful. And Antonio has had an arrangement with the neighbor just across North Salem Road, uh, which is on the corner of thirty-five and Salem Road.
AIA.
AIA, uh, where he did some of his overflow parking, people on weekends. Saturday, Friday, Saturday nights. Uh, so some of his overflow parking has been going there. Uh, that uh property has changed hands. Antonio wanted to buy it, but somebody else currently locked it up and they have their own plans for a cafe. So Antonio now has looked just um, south on the corner of North Salem Road and Mark Reed Road is nineteen Mark Reed. And that is a and it is, we're under contract contingent upon getting whatever zoning changes or approvals or permits needed uh, to use just the northerly portion of the property for overflow parking.
At Abate's property?
It, no, at Abate AIA. It's just on.
It's the street.
Oh, with the yellow houses?
Correct.
Okay.
It's on the, it's nineteen Mark Reed Road. It's on the corner of Cross River North Salem Road and Mark Reed Road.
Yes.
Uh, the house there, even though it's an R one-half acre zone, is a legal two-family. It has a CEO going back to nineteen eighty-four as a two-family residence and the owner could also use it as a professional office. So we're under contract. It's contingent upon approvals. If, if it turns out we can't use it for overflow parking, Antonio probably won't proceed with the contract. Uh, so.
Is it the plan that if everything goes ahead, that the house comes down?
No, no.
The house remains?
The house remains.
So it's just the, the part, the driveway, like from the fence?
Correct. To the driveway. So I've colored your zoning map. So the uh, well, so what I'm coloring in the, in yellow is the uh, is the current improved Bacio site, the restaurant and the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and what's in uh, in orange is uh, well, the, the northerly part, the lower part is AIA. And the southerly part is, which is in the RV zone. I'm sorry, I read it upside down. The, the, uh, Bacio is the entirety of the orange. The yellow is, is the nineteen Mark Reed Road. So we'll start there. So you can see that the RV zone juts down towards Mark Reed Road. And it's just for Bacio and for AIA. As I said earlier, the zoning line bisects or dissects Bacio site. So the, the site that we're looking at now is in yellow, 19 Mark Reed Road. So here's the. This is a photograph coming out of Antonio's or Bacio's parking lot. And you can see in the distance a driveway to 19 Mark Reed Road, it's almost directly across the open. And now we get a little closer. We're just about reaching North Salem Road and coming out of Bacio, and this is the driveway. And you can see a rather deteriorated little garage there on 19.
And that's the house that.
Yeah, and now we get, now we're going up the driveway of 19 Mark Reed Road, you can see the garage is kind of falling down, so the idea is. We would ask you to continue that bisecting zoning line from Bacio across North Salem Road. And so that it would allow Antonio to use everything from the, the southerly edge of the driveway to the fence with AIA for parking.
So you effectively have a shared driveway where parking to the left and the two family.
Correct.
Driveway.
So that driveway will be used by the.
We, right, we would, we would use the existing driveway, service the apartments in the house, tenants of the apartments in the house. But it would also allow for.
As a snowparking.
For parking.
So how many, how many next spots you will.
I, I, Antonio walked it off, and, and here's the fence that separates us from AIA. So basically, instead of, right now, he's, his overflow parking is on the north side of this fence. With a zoning reline, re-changing the zoning line, we would now be parking on the south side of that fence. We, and, and the house would never be used, and, and we could stipulate this in the zoning change. House would never be used for retail business purposes, it would stay as a two family or a single family. And I think we've done something similar to that, have this rezoned, the property here, and there's restrictions on it. You went from retail business to general business, but you said it can only be used for the specific version purposes. And we're okay with that, because all we want is overflow parking. And we're prepared to screen it, screen this whole southerly edge of the driveway so that our Mark Reed. Neighbors, when we can see headlights, we put a fence there, cover green screen, and the house itself provides a bit of a buffer.
Here's my, here's my question, Mike, that Antonio owns the property all the way back to Mark Reed.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm assuming that, that one of the reasons, and I'm unaware of the decision that was made not to allow for a zoning change there. Part of the reason that the zoning change wasn't allowed to permit it to park there is because of people who live. On Mark Reed, I would assume it's all residential, they want to see a parking lot.
It's zone half, residential half acre there, and so we could.
No, correct, but, but so is the property that you want to.
It is, yeah.
Okay, so my, my question is, why then the property across the street versus the property directly defined in last trust? Is there some reason why he doesn't want to expand parking or, or request the zoning change?
Why, why not expand in that grass area?
Yeah.
That's our step.
Oh, you have a reason?
Yeah, that's all our step.
I understand.
And, and I'll be frank, Mark Reed residents were concerned back at the time of this. Expansion with the port of play more than the zoning. And they, they, they were concerned that the restaurant would spread all the way to Mark Reed. We're not proposing that across the street, the house is going to be, remain where it is as a buffer. All we want to do is overflow parking almost directly across from our exit.
How many spaces is he hoping to get out of?
I, I think he's hoping 12 to 15, 12 to 16 spaces, one to ten, and he's going to remove that garage building.
Okay, so you know the approximate width from, it's the stone wall?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know exactly, but it's, I would estimate it around 40, 45 feet from the fence. From wood fence that we, that we have the backside from AIA up to the driveway.
Just doing my division as far as the width of a car.
Yeah, well, it may be some tandem parking too, maybe two valley of parking.
From the back.
And it's leaving the, the grass surface as it is or putting some kind of.
Coming from the southerly edge of the driveway, heading towards Mark Reed Road, the house in Mark Reed Road stays untouched. It's just from the driveway north to the fence for the AIA.
So this is where these cars are, right, right here.
I said to modify the grassy area to put some.
So, so, um.
Yeah, that grass, that grass will come out, it'll be parking cars.
If I, if I might, from out here in cyberspace. Hey, um. I may, I'm inclined to say this is a, it looks reasonable, and I'm sitting here looking at Google Earth, so it looks, it looks. Good to me, but I'm just curious or inclined to ask sort of about the interplay with, say, the, the planning board. And for example, if the expansion, you know, of 12 or 15. Spots, how that maps to the restaurant itself and the, and the usage that was, is, is identified in their. In their plans. And, and also, you know, if this was happening in a planning board process, then, then there would be. Notification, I guess, of, of neighbors and, you know, we'd have, have a chance for some, some input there, so. Were we still, would we still have a, a process there before we're being asked to make a decision?
I, I, we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves, we wanted to. Take the temperature of, of the board to see if there was any interest before we file a formal. Reasonable petition, and if, and if we, if we decide to do that, if we get an indication that. That a majority of your board doesn't think this is a crazy idea, we would prepare a formal petition to submit it. And then you would, as your legal attorney will advise you, refer to zoning and planning boards for, for their comments. Where you took any public hearing action on it.
Been the informal canvassing of the neighbors, as far as they're on?
Not yet.
Will there be some pedestrian facilities, like a crosswalk or potential sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, it's not that high traffic there, but it's not a bad idea.
Right.
To do that.
Okay.
And, and he would, the, the present plan is to use the two apartments for some of his key staffers who live quite a distance away.
Right.
The drive to work.
Yeah, one, one of my thoughts, and Dan will probably appreciate this, is, you know, that area, you know, with the Borough Cafe coming in and. And the, the shopping area in Bacio's, if there was the ability to make it safer for folks to walk. Within that intersection.
Well, historically, again, he's been using AIA lot for overflow, and we haven't had any incidents, people crossing over there.
Right.
We'd have no objection to some kind of a crosswalk.
And with the cafe, my understanding is that the hours at the cafe, so it would be complimentary with Bacio, so they're there day and night.
I, I heard that too, monitoring a planning board meeting, but they've never run Antonio's doorbell or come to visit him for a cup of coffee, thought about it. So we, there's been no discussions directly between the parties. Okay. So that's the, that's the idea, we'd like your board to give some thought to. Encourage you to take a drive by there.
Yeah.
Through that part of town. Appreciate any feedback you have.
I'll just reinforce what I, I think we're, Tony was also going, yeah, I mean, we're not so worried about people walking across North Salem Road at the moment. But as this whole area becomes more and more attractive and, and, you know, more going on. There's more of a, a, a need to think about how it's integrated to the, the whole of the. Area and in fact, you know, you could, you have a whole condominium complex there that could walk over and, and somehow. Use this, the, the development that's going on at both sites to leverage away from pedestrians across Route 35. That's, that's the, the real desperate need, actually.
Well, you, you can convince DOT to get bike paths and pedestrian sidewalks in this area, that'd be terrific, and bring them all the way up to my building.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's the goal. We've had DOT out there, so they, they know we're thinking about this. Okay, any questions?
I appreciate the listening.
Thank you, Michael, we'll, we'll share this with Mary and I'm sure Dan gets a copy as well. Okay, next is a discussion regarding the membership of ethics committee. Andrew, you can take the lead on this.
Well, we were, I don't know if Mr. Paul Shadon has updated, he was updating the last draft of the proposed local law. So my understanding is, is that the makeup of the committee according to our code is three, three members. Two of which are residents, one of which is supposed to be a town employee. And based on the discussions that we've had, we thought, we being the town board, thought it would be better to. Change it so that the third slot was not a town or a town employee, but rather three, a three resident committee. So I proposed changing the code to accommodate that. I believe that that was drafted, and I believe that there was discussion regarding potentially putting in term limits. And I think that's what we were waiting for, was a draft that incorporated the idea of. Term limits for that particular committee into the code that creates the committee, so that's what we were waiting for. What?
What was the proposal, I, I know about the, I remember seeing the early draft as far as the three resident members, but as far as what we're thinking as far. Term limits.
I, I wasn't, I think Mary came up with the idea, I don't remember whether we had said it was four or five years, something like that.
What do you mean each term, that term limits?
No, she, she wanted term limits that you serve for so many years, like that there's a, there's a term, and then there's so many. Something, I don't know whether it was, it was two four year terms or something like that.
Yeah, I don't think that, that would be unique, because I don't think there's any.
It would be unique.
I don't think there's any other committee where you don't, you're.
There are no, that's my knowledge, it was just an idea that Mary had, and so we decided that maybe we wanted to see what that would look like. That was all, that was, that was the update, otherwise, I thought that the, as it was drafted originally was fine. But that was, that was an issue that we discussed, that I thought more than one person aside from Mary was interested in seeing. What it would look like.
So we're, so we're waiting for an update.
I'm assuming that that draft wasn't done because I think we were unclear on what it is that you wanted to make that change, say, how many years? And what are the term limits, but obviously we can get it to right away.
Right.
That was a simple change, and, and I thought we had discussed two four year terms, but I'll check with Mary Shaw on whether it is.
I was going to check with Mary, for her chair, but I have not done that yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've tried to reach out to him, I'm going to try, I just got his cell phone, but I, he didn't respond to my email just yet, so I'll, I'll.
They would have tweaked it that. It's predicated on having somebody, well, because if somebody terms out, then you have.
empty seat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Sure, you could, you could make it ex. Yeah, you could put in there, but that would have to put the power back on the town board, the town board would have the power to extend the term if there's nobody to fill the vacancy or something.
I can recover if there's not.
Yeah, okay.
We know if any other communities are doing anything like this, that would be an interesting input.
With term limits or the composition of the committee?
Uh, the term limits.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, not that, that's, doesn't mean we can't do it, I'm just curious, there's a. Benchmarking there. Okay.
So I guess we'll wait for the group by, extract and cooperate and that stuff.
Yeah, and then we'll decide.
Yeah. Okay, so next is approval of claims, motion to approve claims.
So moved. We have a couple of vehicles for highways in this, so.
That's correct.
That's correct.
300,000 dollars.
Couple of new trucks, I believe, right?
Not the ones that we talked about, two new stuff, but ones for, for use and proof.
Right, yeah. They're, they're previous as a donor average.
I always read your claims at a glance. Okay. Wait for a vote.
Okay, good move, so, yeah, second. Oh, you have a second, discussion all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Calling of the board, I'll start with Dan.
Um, nothing for me, happy birthday to me.
Um, I have a few things that I was seeing come up. Elvack has their blood drive on April 28th from 2 to 8 p.m. at the South Salem Fire Department.
Yes.
I noted that on the website, the shredder truck is going to be here on April 14th in the town park from 9:30 to 12:30. If anybody wants to get rid of all the, that, that stuff in that file cabinet down the basement, that's the time to do it. Lewisboro Land Trust is having a spring poetry hike at the Mount Holly Preserve. Which is, the entrance is across from 21 Mount Holly Road in, uh, east in Katona from 3 to 5 p.m., so it's. Walking, looking at nature and sharing your favorite poems, that's my understanding of what that's about. And, oh, the Vista Fire Department's annuals, getting there is mid 14th. As we get closer, I'll talk about the times, I think the Lions Club has something coming up too, right, Tony?
Yeah, we, we do have a roadside cleanup, April 23rd, April 24th. And bags will be available here at the townhouse, right outside.
We also have the GBHO.
We have the, yes, Goldsboro Channel Organization, that's also on April 23rd, the cleanup of the Ockit Park on Fairmount Road.
People can go to the GBHO website, which escapes me, GBHO.
Goldsboro Channel Organization, just a little bit, yeah.
A question, with the roadside cleanup in either location, if we have young people who are in need of community service outreach for school. Can they volunteer and get community service credit?
I don't see why not, I think so, yes, the Lions Club can sign off on a letter. Or whatever they need to, to show proof that they, as long as they say, yeah, if they, they put some evidence, yeah, we can certainly.
And we have to contact Janet Donahue?
Sure.
To sign it, okay, that's. Alright.
Excellent.
Yeah, a couple of things. Guess, ethical after birthday, Dan, which we brought out. A year of good health. Just want to take a moment to acknowledge Dana, who's been. Kind of an institution in this community, and she's been here almost as long as I have. Just an exemplary public servant and just. Good person who's been dedicated to our community and just incredible resource, said the best resource in our community are people, nobody can provide that. Or Dana will miss her contributions to the community, but we wish her all the best of. Success in her future endeavors. Don't want to, but the holy weekend, Passover coming up, best of health and happiness to those who observe with family and friends and. It's a terrific week for everyone.
Dana, we're going to miss you.
Yes, we are, Dana. And our related note to the, I guess, the, that's what we can, this weekend, that's what we, this weekend. We have in front of the townhouse on Saturday from 12:30 to 1:30, anyone who wants to come by and meet the Easter buddy and the Lewisboro Lion in costume.
They're not costumes.
They're not, they're the real deal, right?
That's right.
Okay. Let's see, the next town board meeting. Is April 25th. And 7:30 p.m. here at the townhouse. Hold to executive session. To interview candidates for committees. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.